Good evening. It's 5:00 PM and I'm calling the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for November 26th, the order. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Have motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next, we have citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens here that wish to address the commission on any item that's not on tonight's agenda? Steve, do we have anybody online?
We do now, Mr. Chair.
All righty. Next, approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Offer approval to pay the bills and vouchers?
Second.
Have motion to second, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And approval of the minutes from November 12, 2024.
Move to approve.
Have motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. All right, next we have legislative updates from our entire group here, but we'd like just invite all three of you up front, same time. We have Representative Heather Keeler, Senator Rob Kupchak, and Representative Jim Joy. It's an honor to have you guys here tonight, thank you for coming. We'll just let you, in order of preference, just step into it and give us whatever briefing you want, and then we'll open it up for questions.
I'll go first. You're on the agenda first, so it's perfect.
Yeah, this is what I'm going to leave to my seniority, right? Okay, so, one, hello, just want to say thank you for all the work that we've been able to do together for the updates I'm going to provide you. The things I'm going to talk about are definitely not mine and mine alone. The number one priority that I have for going into this session is our psychiatric residential treatment facility. This is something that we've talked about in the community and pretty robustly for the last two years, as many of you maybe remember, is our first ask was going to be strictly just a bonding ask. What we learned from that is, in a short amount of time, we had 23 counties, five tribal nations really lean into the fact that this was a regional need. And then in the interim, we, I don't know if you remember, but a year ago, we brought some of the committee out here and had a really robust conversation to realize that this was a statewide need. We've done a lot of work with the agencies behind the scenes, both Department of Health, Department of Human Services, and now Department of Corrections, to really make sure that this is a top priority for them, understanding that the need that we could serve is not only for us, but a border-to-border approach. And so I want to say thank you for all the work you have all done to go to cities to get resolutions, counties, and different organizations, working with higher education institutions as well to make sure that this can be sustainable. And so, we have all talked pretty extensively about that, knowing that this is going to be an extremely bipartisan effort. What we continue to say is addressing mental health, we have to put our parties aside and do what's right for our next generations in our region. And I'm really proud of our team for being able to commit to that going in. The second priority that I have is, last year, we had legislation to create a legislative attendance and study group, truancy study group, which we know happens, it's a unique blend of the education system and then partnering in with the county, because once you're truant, it gets sent over for CPS and then potentially child removal if they feel like it's a neglect. And so, have been working in a very bipartisan way with Representative Baikberg, he's a principal somewhere down in the cities area, but to really make sure that we're also addressing attendance and working close with your truancy team, as our school district was given one of the 13 pilot program funding sites. And so the school district should be working pretty close with you all on how to make sure our kids are in school. The last priority I have, should come at no surprise, but it's to address homelessness. As you know, we've been able to provide county homeless aid that comes to you all, for you to use what is seen fit within your county for the needs. And so, just continuing to lean into that so that you all can be one of the main leaders in how we really address homelessness as a holistic support, you know, moving forward in this community. So those are my top three priorities, looking forward to working with you all over the next two years to address those. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Kupchak.
Sure, thank you. I will also echo Representative Keeler's remarks on the psychiatric regional treatment facility and also commend you for the work that you've done on that. It's really, we're going to lead in the state, I think, on this issue. On that, so I will have the Chair of the Senate Human Services Committee will be coming up here on the 16th for a visit, and I think, hopefully, we'll get Senator Utke, also our neighbor to the east who also sits on that committee, to also be along. He's kind of in town but working on something, so hopefully he can break away and join us on that. And I think that'll be, the money for that will, on the Senate side anyway, will come out of his committee, so I think that'll be important. Other things that I'll be kind of working on this session, sustainable aviation fuel, obviously with the plant that's been proposed here in Moorhead, there's a few things regulatory-wise at the state level, plus there's a tax break that we put in two years ago that'll need to be renewed, so those will be kind of crucial things to make sure that we can get that to happen here. County emergency managers, the Association of County Emergency Managers has approached me about carrying a bill to have some funding for county emergency managers. They do a lot of work. We only see them sometimes in a time when there's a disaster, but behind the scenes, as you all know, they're doing a lot of work, and the state asks a lot of them, but we don't really give them any money for a lot of the things that we're asking, so I'll be carrying that. And I will probably bring back, with a, in the similar vein, I had a bill for some money for county weed agents, I will probably also bring that back. Don't know what we're going to have to work with for money, we'll have a budget forecast out here in a couple of weeks, that'll probably give us a little bit better. As Representative Keeler's mentioned too, housing homelessness, obviously, with what's been happening here locally with Churches United is a huge concern here, so that'll be high on our agenda. I will also, and I've talked probably endlessly about my electronics recycling bill, but we will do that. We did a great tour with Commissioner Campbell over at the facility there in Purim, and it is, we can pull more of that electronic waste out of that stream, that is going to burn at a much more efficient rate, makes their life a lot easier, and it will also, the counties across the state incur costs for recycling these electronics, and so we want to be able to capture more and also make you whole with the cost that you have on that, so that'll be it. Obviously, hope springs eternal for a bonding bill, which I think, you know, for many of us will be a priority, which obviously will have flood mitigation money will be in that as well. Child care will continue, it's always one of the top issues I worked on. We are also looking at trying to get the police skills training center located either here in Moorhead. I know the post board may be having some changes coming on that, I'm not sure how that's going to be, their changes are going to be received, but whatever happens, we need to get some kind of skills training center here. It will only help us in recruiting and with our competition to our neighbors to the east and getting and retaining law enforcement here in our area. And then, last thing, I've been on the Rural EMS Task Force, and we allocated some money towards that last year, it was just kind of a little drop, and I think if there's money to be had or a funding source, we're going to have to look at that, and we're really talking about, really EMS has not been, it's been kind of neglected, it is not handled the same way we handle fire and police, and it is an essential service, and the state needs to be putting some money towards that essential service.
Very good, thank you. And Representative Joy.
Thanks for having me. I echo what Representative Keeler said on the psychiatric facility, and I appreciate all your work on that, and I think that's something we could do and champion for this district right away. Some of the other things I'm going to be working on is 911 fees is a big thing for me, I still have very little answers on that. I have just sent more emails out to discover that, I think we got to continue to put in a permanent funding for first responders, EMS, fire, police, and we have to do that on a permanent basis. And I think it's something that can come out of 911 fees. It's still been silent on that, haven't heard a lot about where all their money goes, I'd like to know more on that breakdown. The other thing I think we're going to have to fix is paid family leave. Paid family leave is coming forward to us, it's hitting the township officials. I mean, this is hitting elected township officials. This is going to hit us in our district all around. I think this is something, I think we got to repeal or look at, it affects our schools too. I also think, meeting with our Clay County superintendents, they're going into deficit spending, and that's something we got to do, is look at these mandates. They said if we remove some of these mandates, their deficit, it would change our budgets. I think this is reality, this is something we're going to have to look at this year. So those are some things, I, of course, sit on taxes, so I would like to see reduced taxes, but we'll see how the session goes, but I just think there's a lot to be looked at as we move forward and what our, actually, our budget's going to look like, you know, sales tax has been down the last two quarters over about, it was $66 million and $46 million in just sales tax. We got to figure out why sales tax is dropping, what's going on, so. I think that's reality, and I hope, I, you know, all of our bills coming forward are going to have to be bipartisan, we got to split government this year, which I think is good, and I think we can work together and do that. I think we can work on line item bills, smaller bills, we don't need a lot of bills rushed through, but we can get what we need to get done, and I hope for a small bonding bill coming through this year too, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you to the three of you for showing up today. I think for the public, it's important to note that there have been times in which this body has met with our elected leaders in St. Paul, and we would provide an update to you on things that are priorities or needs, and I can honestly say, the feedback and the dialogue that we have had with all three of you over the last session and the offseason, if you will, is really important because we've been able to show you what's going on, we've been able to collaborate, we've been able to think critically on how we can address the needs of all of Clay County and your district, and it's no surprise today, the priorities that you all have really reflect the priorities and the needs in which we're seeing. Clay County really operates as an extension of the state, and so I think it's important for us to continue to have really good dialogues with all of you, but I'm really excited about the partnerships that you've helped us build with your colleagues in St. Paul, that we're continuing to build with so many people here locally that are taking such an active stance in lobbying, if you will, for the needs of our residents. There are some painful, painful issues that we're seeing with young children in our community, and so we are just really encouraged to hear from all three of you that that PRTF is a large priority going forward, because I said yesterday at the city council meeting, to have 26 counties offering letters of support, five tribal nations, higher ed, K through 12 ed, and then most of the large cities in Clay County, that's a huge collaboration that we don't often see. And however we can help you to continue to spread the need on that specific issue, we're definitely making ourselves available to do that. On the other issues, we certainly have had dialogues, and you've showed up in meetings and township meetings, and you've heard from the Barnesvilles and the Hollies of the world that EMS is a challenge, and it's really, really hard with volunteer, with volunteer groups to make ends meet, no transports. Get all the work that you're doing on that piece, because as someone who lives in rural Clay County, and someone who had a sister die because there was not ambulance that could off, uh, transport in time, I'm very aware that there are pockets of our county that do not have adequate service for that, so thank you for your continued work on that.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I want to comment first, thank you for your work on the PRTF, that's, I think we've, we've taken a lot of time here in Clay County, and we've really designed something that will really be good, not only for this region but for the state. And to show the flexibility that we have as we've been in the design phase, we recently heard from DHS that they were, they were wondering about potentially converting a part, portion of that to being a locked facility. There's none in the state, and working with, conversations with solutions who we intend, would plan to run that facility, they have agreed that that would be good, and so it's just, that's another deal that strengthens our argument for why it should be here, because there isn't any in the state. And unfortunately, we don't like to see any kids locked up, but there are some that it's for the safety of all, that that's what has to be done. I want to touch a little bit on the homeless issue, because that is really, it's really hit the news here recently, and I'm glad to see that there's a lot of community discussion. Every quarter, we have a, a regional AMC, regional meeting, district meeting, and at one of our most recent ones, one of the questions was, do you have a homeless issue in your, in your county, and what do you do about it? And the interesting thing was, from the smaller counties on up, some of the smaller counties, we don't have a homeless issue. And then that, it seemed like the higher populated county that was, the more significant that issue became. And you know, so to me, that might be saying, well, these people are trying to get where they can have services, you know, and so, and obviously, we're, we're the biggest area in Northwest Minnesota. The, the one thing that I, and I caution this board, and I'm always curious, careful about this, is that I don't think these types of situations should be funded from a property tax standpoint. I, you know, I think the, the state has a lot better opportunity, and I'm thankful for what we get that goes through the Social Service Department, but any way that we could have increased, and you're, I know Senator Kupchak, you talked about that, and maybe working to see those funds increased, but to me, that is a better solution to help solve the problem. As I remind all of our colleagues on here, I look at that property tax as a very regressive tax, and, and I, and we shouldn't be using regressive forms of tax to help those in need. So, so any way, any, any way that you can help out in that regard, I'm sure Quinn, Quinn's sitting back there, head of our Social Service Department, I'm sure he'd love it if he could send out an RFP on being able to use even more, to even having more money to help solve that problem. So, that's, I guess that's, that's kind of my deal on the homelessness, but I, I really hope that you can help find support for that issue, because it's not going to go away.
I guess I would just comment on the fact that most of the issues have been covered already, you know, but, you know, when this new genera, I mean, not new generation, when you guys came on and took over for Ken, Paul, and for Ben, it was, boy, you got some big shoes to fill. I think you were the right size though, you guys. You did a great job, and I appreciate your help that you've given us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all, and congratulations on your reelection, of course. I guess I'm being the last, it'd be a little bit of a repeat, but I sincerely say this, it's nice to get you, to know you as friends, it's nice to get to know you as working partners with us, and, and I want to thank you for the ease of accessibility, and I look forward to the work we do in St. Paul together. Not only is it trying to bring something forward, but, you know, to you, but you help us with the other people down there, and having that, for me anyway, when you mention you go talk to sessions such, that means somewhere there's been a conversation that breaks the ice, so we can walk in there with some confidence and be carrying a message as one, you know, for the whole state. So I just appreciate the back and forth that we all have been doing, so, thanks.
And I'll just wrap it up, so all five of us have something to say. It's been a pleasure. We are coming into a very interesting time in politics, and in this state, we have, it's right down the middle with you guys, and I'm sure that's going to put a lot of pressure on you, but, yeah, I, I actually had regular contact with a fellow named David Pryor, who was a senator, first a governor and then a senator from Arkansas, and he and I had an opportunity to discuss things a number of occasions, and he said something to me that really stuck, and he said, "The key to good legislation is, everybody needs to leave the room a little bit unhappy." He says, "If you have everybody walk out of the room a little unhappy, you got good legislation." And, you know, I think that would make us happy. We operate here, this is a nonpartisan position, it's really a great place to be, because we don't answer to anybody but ourselves and our constituents, and I hope you guys feel the same way, because you're not there because of your party, you're there because of who you are in these communities and what you've got to contribute, and we're very grateful for what you've brought to the table, and I want you to know, you were spoken of well with this group, and we're, we are happy with who represents us, and we will support you any way we can. Thank you.
Can I add one thing? I, I know that you're coming, Steve's going to be coming down, I think, every other week, right, or, or something like that?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay. We'll be seeing you more often.
Yes.
But also, I think it's really important for the people in the room and who's listening, that your stories also matter. Adding written testimony, you know, to the things that we've talked about being our priorities really helps, we know that the geographic spread is hard to get down to the Capitol to testify with us for three minutes, but if you all in the community want to share your story on why this matters, written testimony is just so powerful as well, and so just making sure we all know that our community voice is really what helps us get things across the finish line. It's been fun to have you all come down and sit at the tables with us to testify, but that community voice really makes a difference for us all to be able to do our work as well. Thank you.
Ms. Chair, I might add too, when it comes to Steve, I, you know, I think our board has kind of enlisted the help of Paul and Jenny to, on a call's notice, to be down there to help you in any type of committee discussions that you might have too, so I think they've kind of taken the pledge to make a quick trip if needed to.
We have a rapid, rapid response.
Yeah, yeah, we have our two commissioners and a rapid response for legislative.
Taking the plunge.
Thank you, you guys have a good Thanksgiving.
So briefly, quickly, I know that we've talked about this, so it's no surprise, but our third priority, obviously, is the flood mitigation funding, and we've had lots of conversations with that, but didn't want the meeting to go off without us mentioning that we'll continue to be advocating for that need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quinn, you're up.
I don't know why I always have the toughest axe to follow. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I am here, unfortunately again, to request to replace a social worker in our Child Protection Services Division. This is a resignation in the case management unit, so it's a little bit different than the previous two that I came for. The caseload activities for this social work position are ongoing child protection services, auto home placement activities, a lot of court work, filing petitions, filing court reports, case planning with families, working with community providers and stakeholders. Responsible for meeting our DHS DCYF mandates for Child Protection Services, once it hits the ongoing case management side of the work. This position is unique in that it does generate some child welfare targeted case management revenue, which is not the same for the assessment investigator positions. It's difficult to predict what that is, because it's dependent on eligibility of the families that the case manager is working with, but on average, it does generate some revenue. This is a budgeted position in the 2025 budget, I've included the wage calculation, would anticipate approximate savings of about $5,700, as I would anticipate this position starts at step one, and the current occupant is at step three, and I would yield for any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Campbell.
Good afternoon, Quinn. Yeah, this, this child protection one seems to show up a lot.
It's tough, yes.
And I, I guess what I, so, do you do exit interviews, or does Darren do exit interviews, or how does, Darren maybe want to pipe in?
We do do, we do send out exit interviews, some people return them, some people do not.
Are these, are these positions, when these positions, are they leaving the county, or are they maybe taking other positions within the county?
It, it does vary, we see a little bit of both, we see a lot of lateral movement when positions and other divisions open up, this particular person is leaving the county. Whether it's a formal exit interview or not, we try to collect that information as much as possible, in my previous role, obviously, I dealt with this quite a bit.
Yeah, I guess, I guess when you, when you start to see a, a lot of revolving door in a certain area, you have to start asking questions, how, how, what could we do different?
Yeah.
You know, and I, you know, sometimes there, it's difficult, and maybe there, maybe there is nothing you can do, but at least it should be looked at, I, you're being new in your position now, maybe it'd be a time to...
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. If, if I had a great answer for it, I would have told Rhonda to do it six years ago, but, but that being the case, I mean, the reality is, is that sometimes the job just gets at you.
Yeah, I know, it's a difficult job.
Yeah, yeah. This person in particular, as sad as I am to see them go, they were pretty transparent with me about why they were leaving, and them taking care of themselves is always going to be kind of our priority, so, as sad as I am, I'm also thankful that they were brave enough to make that decision and realize that it was having some negative impacts on them that probably shouldn't be happening, and that's the emotional toll that can come with doing the work in child protection. But I couldn't agree more, constantly looking at how can we improve things, how can we increase that retention, is something I think about quite often.
I'm making most to approve, you have to have backfill too, or?
I, I would request backfill, I don't anticipate it, but I would request it, just in case.
Okay, with backfill.
Second.
Have motion to second, any further questions? Now, we'll move to a vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes, thanks, Quinn. Justin Sormar, county engineer.
Did you bring a supper, or what?
You're hanging with a rough crowd there.
Yeah. Good evening. So the item I have today is a resolution for the DNR, so this resolution just is the way that we get funds back for maintaining the art trail which runs from Yulin to the North County line. This is an annual thing that we have to do every year, and just make sure that we can get back the funds that we put into it.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve Resolution 2024-34.
I'll second.
Have motion to second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, next Rory Schmidt. Rory, Technology Services Director.
Good evening, Commissioners. Just here today to ask for a replacement to our electronic storage system here at the county. Current one we have is about five years old and nearing the end of life, and we'd like to replace it with the lowest, lowest cost option out of the three quotes we received, which was pure storage brand through Marco Inc. for $99,034.33. The other two were, one from Bytespeed, which is $105,995, and the other one for $156,196.30 through CDWG. And the, the funding source would come out of internal services replacement funds for this.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve the purchase of electronic storage appliance from Marco in the amount of $99,034.33.
I'll second with a question, did you look over these, why there's a $50,000, $56,000, $57,000 difference?
Yeah, these are the three cheapest ones, they get it in over $200,000 as well, so, but yeah, they...
They offer what you need.
They range, each brand is a little bit different, but the, the swing in price is quite a bit.
If you offer what you need, I, I second.
Is it, is there a warranty that comes with this?
Yep, a five-year.
That's under...
For all these.
Any other questions? Not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes, thank you, Rory. Why don't we, since we're running a little bit ahead, do some of our committee reports? I believe we're going to start with Commissioner Mojo tonight.
Commissioner Mojo might not be ready.
Oh, you're always ready.
Okay.
Last week. Going back to the 19th, correct?
Uh, yes, I believe so. Yep.
All right, so. That evening on the 19th, I attended the Clay County Planning Commission meeting. We had just barely made a quorum, so I appreciate those that were able to attend. We did have an update discussion on chapters one through four of the development ordinance update. And then we, I'm sorry, we had a number of hearings on the agenda. We had an IUP from a, in regards to a second dwelling, actually, the first two were second dwellings. Those were approved, they fit within the parameters and the need. And then we had interim use permit for a dog kennel facility in Southern Clay County. That also was approved. And then a IUP for wholesome. So that one did take a little bit of discussion, but did go ahead and permit that. Part of what Clay County Planning has tried to do, as we have a lot of gravel and some of them are, are needing to have additional hearings, we're trying to align the time of operation as closely as possible with all of those. And so that's what the, you know, the substantial discussion came through on that. The township did have their requirements and wanted it a specific way, so we did make a recommendation. I do know they needed to have additional conversations with the township. Sorry. You really caught me off guard there. Wednesday, the 20th, I attended the Joint Powers Board meeting at the Red River Basin Commission. We had really great updates on some reporting software. We had great updates and discussion from all of the member entities, so I appreciated the opportunity to sit at that table. The next day, I attended the November SWAC Committee meeting. Good updates from Commissioner Campbell on the Prairie Lakes piece. We had a dialogue on the success of the Take Jack Back. The community has really rallied around that. And then at the end, we were informed that the city of Morehead has supplied a one-year notice on their intent to separate at the Resource Recovery Facility. That is certainly disappointing as we jointly went to the legislature to ask for the funds to build that facility to see enormous savings. I, I know that there are components, both for the city of Morehead and Clay County, that there were some costs, some mutual benefit because of that co-locating. The city had identified snow removal and law, lawn care as part of the issue. The other issue is that they have had a 20% increase in material handling. Based on the discussions that we've had at solid waste over the last year, the amount of trash that is generated from all of our citizens has not gone down. If anything, I think it's gone up. And so as we have dialogue with the city on, on, what I guess my hope is that we can figure out some way to mutually agree that this is beneficial. I know that there is about $1,000 a day savings on trucking from the city of Morehead's perspective, so I think that, that does, there are some benefits there. So if it seems like I'm even more prepared for the answer on this one than I am about my committees, that was certainly a shock as we went to the legislature as partners on that. That afternoon, I attended the MCC JPA Board meeting. We did have property acquisition reports and litigation action updates. We approved a relocation reimbursement. We did make an amendment to one of the solar garden release agreements and then approved farmland lease rates for properties affected. And then we did highlight that Clay County will continue to go forward for the additional, the additional flooding, flood mitigation dollars from the state. That evening, I attended the MetroCog Policy Board meeting. We had adjusted it to not conflict with the diversion authorities, so we were able to get the business done. We did have approval of the 2025 Health Vision Dental Insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota for staff. We approved a map bus appointment to the policy board and approved a human resources consulting services agreement, which is general business that we've done before, and approved the 2025 through 2028 tip amendments and metro profile final report, the comprehensive safety action plan report, and the EV readiness study final report. Lots of really great reports and studies that are being finished up at MetroCog, so I encourage the citizens to go on MetroCog's website to read those if they are into that. And that evening, I attended the MetroCog Open House that they had in Dilworth on the 15th Avenue Study. It was really interesting to hear feedback from the community on, on potential alignments or projects and future collaboration potential with the Heartland Trail. Friday, I attended the Teams meeting with Matt Jacobson of our Planning Commission or Planning and Zoning Department. You've heard me talk a little bit about a proposed solar project that's proposed to go through in Southern Clay County, east of Barnesville, a substantial amount of acres. There's been a lot of confusion throughout the community. We've had, I've had several landowners and the city of Barnesville reach out just to see if we knew much more. So I believe Steve jumped on that as well. We had a long dialogue with them on their project. It's called the Buffalo Ridge Project, the amount of time that needs to go through because it's so large, it's permitted at a different level. And I think the intent of that was to really gain information so that we can adequately explain to them, they reach out to us, what that project looks like. After that, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Center Finance Committee Report. We did jump in depth on that budget for, proposed for 2025 pretty intensely. I had previously attended the Clay County Budget Proposal with Clay County Social Services Staff, and so there really wasn't anything new on that. There was some dialogue from other commissioners that wanted maybe some of our capital investments reported in a different way. And I think that concludes that day. I'm sorry. I'm gonna have to come, come back, because I, I'm a little unorganized right now. That concludes my reports for right now. I might have.
You can talk about last night. Morehead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yesterday, I, as part of our PRTF Committee, requested to be on the agenda at the city of Morehead to garner a resolution of support from the city council on our PRTF. Commissioner Krabinoff and I attended that. We were able to plead our case, if you will, to provide all of the vast support as I alluded to earlier, and it was exciting to hear that the city of Morehead will be offering their support during, actually, just about 10 minutes ago, we received the letter of support from the city, and then we will be getting a resolution of support from the city the second week in December. Also, yesterday, I couldn't attend in person, but I did listen to the Dilworth City Council, and they also were very appreciative of so many people taking a step forward to address this critical need, and they also signed a resolution of support for the project.
You was at a meeting this morning, if you wanna talk about that one.
What?
On your own land.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I just.
Just to help you out, I know you're getting a little bit older.
Yeah, okay.
We all get older.
Sorry, I've been, what'd you say? What did you say?
We all get older.
Yeah. I've been home with a sick daughter for two days, so I'm just a little out of sorts. Yeah, I apologize. So this morning, oh my gosh, this morning, I attended the.
Pretty smooth.
What?
Drink's pretty smooth.
I can't even hear it. This morning, I attended the Clay County Own. Did have a follow-up dialogue. This board has been reported to that there's a Riverton Township property that we've identified as a potential for seeking RFP for a lease for a single-track motorbike operation. There's some, a group in town that was really excited about that. Sometime in between the last meeting and the meeting this morning, the, there has been, the sheriff's office has put up some canine training boxes out there. The sheriff's department has some concerns with sharing that property that belongs to the solid waste department on that, so we did have a pretty, just, pretty long discussion on that. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Just see if that's any.
And keep in mind, Commissioner Gross is watching.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, on last Wednesday, I, I attended the Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting, and you know, the financial, this year, the, the reserves is the same, the cash, the cash balance is about 500,000 lower than the prior year, but within that, during the current budget, they paid for some long-term projects that, so they didn't have to go into the Internal Service Fund, so there's, we're still in the plus and hopefully by the end of the year, that even, even get better. The other issue that came up, and we've talked about the, the ash, and we're looking at trying to create a, a new use for the ash and roadbeds. There's a lot of work being done on that, and I've talked about how the Otter Tail County Ash landfill is meeting its capacity. And they just recently went to an adjoining landowner, and the landowner had agreed in principle to sell the land, sell a portion of the land that, that could be used by the county, and the only stipulation was they wanted to have it done by December 31st. Of course, that's a decision that'll need to be made by the Otter Tail County Board, but Otter Tail County wanted some sort of assurance from Prairie Lake Solid Waste that, that we could enter into in a negotiation to use that land, of which we will need to do anyway. So what we agreed to is an agreement in principle that, that we would, we would enter into a negotiated agreement on the operations side of, if they purchase that land, and that's the best we could do at this point in time, but there will be more information coming on that. I believe the dollar number for the land purchase was somewhere around $100,000, so. Then I, the next day, I attended this Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting. Corey introduced Darren, is Darren's kinda taking over that portfolio a little bit. He's gonna be at those meetings in place of Steve. And then we also heard from Corey about some demolition landfill increased costs. They were going from, our current charges that we have are 1550, and Corey proposed that we go to 1940, and the, and another one, they're two different fees, and the other one was 20 to 25, and so the board authorized, or recommended to this board. So Corey will be coming to this board with potentially increasing those, those fees. And of course, we, what I suggested is we try to keep those fees as close to what our costs are as possible, because the more we, and any of you guys that live in the townships know that the more fees cost, the more you find things in ditches. And so we, we need to, we need to find that happy medium, and that's why a lot of times, in the case of, of televisions, we subsidize that. We don't charge people to drop those off, because otherwise, we're finding them in ditches throughout the county and, and having to have that cost to collect them and do something with them, so. And then, of course, we did talk a little bit about the letter that was received that Commissioner Mojo talked about. I've asked, I've asked that we meet with the group that's been, through the cooperative agreement that we have, there's a committee that's supposed to meet, so I've asked that that meeting happen soon to go over those issues and try to resolve. I, I don't, I don't know, there's a lot of, it was a frustrating letter, to say, to say the least, and, and they, you know, they talk about the financial things, that they said, well, we weren't aware of these things, while they, they were in the agreement. You know, so it's, maybe they, maybe they were surprised at how significant the prices And one of their big issues was, Commissioner Mojo mentioned that there's 20% more garbage being processed. Well, within the city, there's even more, but on top of that now, that facility has to allow rural residents to come in there. What's interesting is they don't operate any more hours in the day, so I don't know how their expenses can be any higher. Their, their people are there anyway, working. So we have, we have to have some discussions on that. It was, and, and again, I, and Councilmember Hendrickson, he did say that, you know, according to the contract, they had to provide that letter according to the agreement in the event that we couldn't come up with some sort of, you know, resolution to the problem, so. Worst-case scenario is it'll be done in a year, and then we'll have to see how we charge So then, then that same day, I did attend the Morehead Clay County Joint Powers Board Meeting. Commissioner Mojo, I don't have anything to add based on Commissioner Mojo's report to that, and then at 3:30, we had a diversion.
Oh, the MCC.
MCC JPA, yeah. Yeah, then that afternoon, I had the diversion Board of Authority meeting. No new, I'm, there was, nothing really new to add there. Commissioner Scherling and Commissioner Peterson, it was their last meeting. They were, they were in Cass County, they were termed out, so, so they're, so they had an opportunity to speak about their time on there, and it was nice to hear their thoughts, and we wish them, wish them well moving forward. Yesterday, I attended the West Central Regional Water Meeting in Halsted. It was a pretty interesting meeting. We did hear, we had a presentation on the financial policy presentation, and then we got into the weeds on a little bit of, a little bit of stuff, and one of the things that we, that they asked us to consider is how, how, the cost distribution, how you, how we're gonna go about a cost distribution, and there's, they referred to it as three, three options. There's a segregated cost, there's a option two, which a postage stamp, and a third one, which was a tiered approach. And in, in the postage stamp option, it was, it was more evenly, you know, the costs were more evenly split amongst all the users, and they were kinda looking for a recommendation on where to go, and so we, we kinda, well, we did a, we did a move to go with that option. It's hard to get too far in the weeds talking about it, but there's a lot to it. And we got our, our, another, a little bit, and we did have some conversation. There still is the issue, for those of you, I think we reported on the court proceeding, and in the court proceeding, one of the, the only negative, there was a lot of individuals who were looking forward to having rural water, but they, they're. who were looking forward to having rural water, but they, there, there was one entity who had some concerns about the boundaries that Polk County had established. And so there's a lot of discussion on that, and, and we basically said Polk County and Marshall Polk is the other water district need to figure out that boundary. That's where that's at, so. And then of the 300,000 that we jointly had put in the three counties, 211,000 of that has been spent. Obviously, we're gonna not get to where we need to be between that 211 and 300,000. But we are looking for alternative sources to help with the planning, and that's including West Central Initiative and some other sources that we're going to, to help try to get additional funds in for that planning process. That concludes my report.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, yes.
I do now, it's hard to report on your committees when you look at November 2025 in your calendar, that's why nothing is written down. So the only meetings that I did forget, there, I did have a meeting in regards to the PRTF, and figuring that out moving forward. I had a meeting with Ryan Erdman from Extension on planning for the next year's meetings. And then yesterday, I did attend the meeting at Lakeland Mental Health Center's annual or monthly meeting, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna call a break right now. We've got a truth in taxation in about 10 minutes, so we'll take a short break. Okay, it's 6:01, and we have a truth in taxation scheduled for 6 o'clock, and we're gonna proceed with Steve.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, on behalf of the County, Clay County Board of Commissioners, I'd like to welcome those attending truth and taxation, both in person and watching online. Budget packets are available in the chambers here, for those interested wanting to go through the packet with us. Also tonight, if those of you who are here to plan to speak, to make sure that you sign in on the clipboard, and also when you come up to, to speak, make sure that you say first, last name and township residence for the record. Just a reminder that tonight is about providing comment for the proposed 2025 budget. If you have an issue with your property evaluations or taxes, unfortunately, the time to address, address those concerns was to take place back in April and June through our Board of Appeals and Equalization. This evening, we're holding public comment on the, on the proposed 2025 budget as a whole. Jill Murray from our Assessor's Office is available this evening with her staff to answer any questions that you may have, and certainly citizens are willing, are, are welcome to stay through, through the truth and taxation, or they can leave now and go across the hall into the other courtroom across the way and talk with Jill and her staff. All right, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. As you're aware, our, our budget process started this past May with our department heads preparing and presenting their proposed, proposed budgets initially to the county administrator and county auditor, and then the full, full board. This board has provided guidance, directives, and numerous adjustments were made over several months based on that guidance. The culmination of that work came forward in Resolution 2024-27 on September 17th, when this. At 4.62%, allowing Ms. Johnson to comply with Minnesota state statutes in establishing the levy. At truth and taxation this evening, I will be presenting the proposed budget information packet based on that certified preliminary levy. Commissioners, I'll take a pause from time to time, but if you have immediate questions or comments, please feel free to jump in. As I mentioned earlier, we will also allow for time at the end of the presentations for citizens to ask questions and/or provide comments. And so with that, I would yield to ask if there's any questions from the Commission before I start.
Questions for Steve. Proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Page one of your packet should look fairly familiar. We've gone over this document several times. It establishes the framework of how we got to our net levy request today. I'm not going to go through it specifically here, but will throughout this presentation. But again, just wanted to, to show how we, how we got to that 4.26% with, with the additional requests, utilizing fund balance and also utilizing the county program aid from the state of Minnesota. The next page, it addresses our county levy that we would be proposing through, through this budget. This is the maximum dollar amount that we would be asking our citizens of Clay County to contribute in, in the 2025 tax year. That levy this year is $44,936,746. This levy is broken down into five separate but distinct revenue categories. We have general reserve funds, which is comprised of $26,186,240, or 58.27% of, of the levy. Social services, which is $13,214,605, or 29.41% of the levy. Road and bridge, which is $4,826,028, or 10.74%. Debt retirement of $665,595, or 1.48%. And building improvement funds of $44,278, or 1.48%. Through the tax collection process, Lori Johnson allocates the tax dollars to the appropriate department funds, and we'll touch, touch a little bit further on that later in the presentation. Any questions in regards to the tax levy? The next slide that we're going to cover is our projected expenditures. In 2025, we are projecting expenditures of $123,926,152. This document here breaks down those into our 11 categories. Again, the majority of what you're seeing here, and our significant portion, I should say, of this is our, goes to our fixed costs of our employees. They are the backbone of what we do here at the county. We have roughly 680 employees at this time, and so again, they are one of our largest fixed costs through this process. The general reserve fund is $36,931,976, or 29.8%. Social services is $29,810,381, or 24.05%. Road and bridge is $19,846,875, or 16.02%. Public health is $12,015,320, or 9.7%. Juvenile detention is $9,479,707, or 7.65%. Solid waste is $5,691,13, or 4.59%. Debt retirement is $4,582,325, or 3.7%. Internal service saw an increase of 2.8% to $3,464,652. The family service center expenses of $1,903,903, or 1.54%. Major improvements is $150,000, or 1.12%, and building improvements is 550,000, or .04%. It's important to note for our citizens at the solid waste department, the family service center and the juvenile center secure portion are considered enterprise funds. What that means is these programs are considered to be self-supporting from the fees that they charge for their services and for their operations, and their budgets are not taken into consideration when establishing the annual levy. As you can see through these, these two slides, there, there is a significant difference between the total expenditures and revenues collected through the levy process. The information that our citizens need to be aware of, that as a county, we act as a funding pass-through for the state of Minnesota and federal, the federal government. State and federal government has many required mandates that they have asked the county to carry out and provide funding for the services. These funds are used to make up the difference in the balance, in balance revenues and expenses. Are there any questions in regards to the budgeted expenses?
Could you explain to Deputy Terrell, I mean, I look at one spot under tax levy, it's 1.48, or 665,000, then it's 4 million in the other one.
So, so the debt, the other, the other one is the payments that we make on our bonds. And so the debt retirement has to do with the remaining, of, of the projects that we have, that we have done, the remaining dollars that we have for that, for that debt retirement on the projects. So the, the, the payment portion is what we pay, what we. The other piece is the debt retirement for what we, we still owe.
Oh, we still, okay. I was gonna say, that 665 looked real good there. That's just what we're paying each year.
Any other questions?
Twelve years, I'm finally learning.
Other questions?
All right, the, the next slide that we have is, has to do with our, our Clay County levy history for the last, from 2017 to 2000 proposed to 2025. Again, the first line that I'd like to focus on is the, the spread levy, the fourth line. Again, the spread levy is, is one of the, the combined areas or proposed spread levy for, for this year is 5.77%. As you see over the last nine years, we have between 4.77 in 2021 to 7.9 in 2020. If you recall, you'll see two asterisks on the, on the net, the net new construction line, and would note that in 2020, in 2020 and 2025, this board approved and implemented a market study in order to make sure that we were able to recruit and retain our quality staff. And so the average spread levy over the last nine, nine years has been 5.55%. And if you were to remove the 2020 and the 2025, we had 5.3%. It's important for our citizens to understand that, that all of the spread levy percentages listed are prior to taking into consideration new construction growth. Clay County has been fortunate to experience new construction growth between 1.5, 1.5 and 1.25% over the past few budget cycles, with this year's percentage being 1.15. In addition to new construction growth, the Clay County Board of Commissioners also may look to utilize one-time use of revenue funds to offset levies. While careful consideration needs to go into this decision, these funds may be used, may become available due to higher-than-expected revenues, lower-than-anticipated expenditures, or both. Our commission has been clear that if the county has asked for funds from its citizens that were not utilized in the fiscal years, in the previous fiscal years, the county needs to look at utilizing those funds in the future budgets. The Clay County Board of Commissioners has made, has made the recommendation this year to utilize $1.835 million in fund balance. $1 million from our general fund, a half a million dollars from public health, and $350,000 from social services. This year's budget also includes the utilization of the remaining ARPA dollars that we received, and also some public safety, public safety funds provided by the Minnesota Legislature. With the board's actions this year, the proposed tax levy increase is 4.62, which you see in the far right column. Lastly, an important note of recognition for our citizens is the consistency of, of the board's actions, as, as they've taken it to the approach with levy increases. Being consistent in setting the levies, we do not see spikes that can have both short and long-term consequences. This board, this goes to the board's foresight of being good stewards of your tax dollars. If you take a look of our average net with new construction, we average 4.24% or 3.96% on the years that there were not market increases. At the end of this presentation, I plan to present a document from the Minnesota State Auditor that captures the outcomes and the benefits of the consistency in setting levies. And this, this is just another example of showing, showing that levy amount. Also levy history from 2024 to 2025 in our key categories. And, and the next item here is, is a Clay County budget history. Again, when we look at, it's not only our taxes that we ask our citizens, but we also receive additional funding, as we mentioned, through state and federal government, through intergovernmental transfers. Charges for services, again, what we charge our citizens to, to do the work that we do. And again, I think that as we, when we, this will come up again later at the, at our last document to show, again, our board feels like these charges for services are additional fees or a tax that are on our citizens, and, and you'll see that we, as a, as a county, are one of the lowest charges of, in the, in the state of Minnesota.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve, can you remind me again why the licenses, licenses and permits for '25 is about a half a million dollars behind all of the other years?
Oh, that is a.
I remember having that dialogue.
Yeah, that's a great question.
I mean, we've not anticipated a substantial decrease in revenue in any of the dialogues we've had.
I would have to ask the auditor treasurer on that.
That's fine, I just think for some clarification, that might be helpful.
Again, that gives us to our total, total budget revenues of 119,000, 119,857,570. When we look at our expenditures, again, we've covered several of these areas already, but to, to show that our total budget expenditures, again, are $123,952. When we look at, when we look at this situation, our revenues are, fall below what the expenditures are. I think it's important for our citizens to understand that we do not, we're not budgeting a deficit. Here in Clay County, we utilize internal service for projects and large purchases. We, we put aside a smaller dollar amount rather than, than to purchase them all at one time for the funding, and thus, we utilize, we may save the money now and we, and we spend it in a different year. And so I think that, that practice by the board has, has put the county in a good position again to be able to keep our levies, our levy on a more steady, steady track. Summary, summary of expenditures, as we go through our, our different updates from the, from our budgets each year, we go through this, where, where we're at from an expenditure standpoint. And one of the things that, I'm not gonna go through each of these, but I'm gonna provide the highlighted, highlighted yellow areas with an explanation. If there's other areas that you'd like further explanation, I can certainly try to answer those also. The County Board of Commissioners saw a 12.38% increase. That has to do with, if you recall, the board put aside $25,000 for the Red River, Red River Communications Grant. And so at the time of the preliminary levy, we were, we had not found it if we'd received that grant yet. We did not receive that grant, unfortunately, or they did not receive that grant through the, the border-to-border grant. And so in our final budget, that will be, that $25,000 will be removed from the Board of Commissioners area and then put towards, towards the overall budget as, as you guys have taken that board action already. The auditor treasurer is highlighted, 9.99%. Again, our, much like our projects, the auditor treasurer saves fun, saves our plans for elections in, even in non-elections years. So we're, we're able to, to save, save each year and, and not have a spike during the elections. The, the Assessor's Office is in their, within their budget, they ask for aerial pictometry that would help both the auditor treasurer, well, several departments, auditor treasurer's office, the, the assessor, actually soil and water, highway, just to name a few. I think we've, in our discussions, since this has come out, we've talked about the utilization of, of repairing aid would be a use of this. And so with the board's action, we would be able to remove, remove that, and that percentage would, would see a decrease. Information Services, 30, 36.8%. This is where, if you recall, last year, the communications. Shifted from, from the administrators. Shifted from, from the administrator's budget to, to information services. Information Services also has a halftime position that within its, within its budget has requested to make that a full-time position. And that's where those two, two items came. But, but the majority of that was just a shift from the, from the county administrator's budget to, to information services. As victim witness advocate, as you recall, this, the board approved a, a new position in the victim witness and for the last two years, we've paid for that position through, with ARPA funds. And this is the first year that it will show up within the actual levy budget. Grounds and maintenance, just want to point out that they saw a decrease. We've had some retirements. Joe continues to, to look at ways to become more efficient. Will be taking on, he looked at some contracts this year that they'll be taking on. And saving the county some money there. Law enforcement, the sheriff's department increased eleven point eight percent. Again, as you recall, what the public. This board approved the sheriff to hire two additional deputies. And so we're seeing a part of that. We are utilizing some of the, the public safety dollars to, to pay for those positions or part of those positions this year, but we did see an eleven point eight percent increase there. Dispatch, as this board is aware, we, we partner with the city of Morehead, Fargo, West Fargo and Cass County with a joint dispatch facility. The operations of, of that budget are, are established by elected officials in, in all of those governmental entities. And through that process, we have a, have a, we follow the Metrikov formula. And as they, their facility, as we were building a new facility in that process and the, and the increase of costs, our portion saw a thirteen point one-six percent increase there. Extension, we've had multiple conversations throughout the year. The Minnesota Extension did a, did a market study for all of their positions and made some fairly significant adjustments to their positions for. And therefore, we will see a sixteen point three-one percent increase with the extension contract. Metro, Metro Council, I think that you, you'll see a fifteen percent or forty-five percent decrease. Just from a board's reminder, we pay under the Metrikov formula for operations and overhead. And this is primarily done through the Federal Highway Administration and Federal Transit Administration. And there's a twenty percent local match that we're required to, to, to cover with our, with our regional partners. And so, and then there's also contracted planning services. These are additional fees for contracted consulting services for specific projects such as the Fifteenth Avenue Bike, our bikes plans, et cetera. This year, we saw, we did not see as many contracted planning projects. And so we saw, we saw a significant difference in that request for Metrikov. West Central Initiative saw eleven point eleven percent increase. That was moved, that moved from eighteen thousand to twenty thousand. The Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC Chamber and Abatement Program saw a decrease of eighteen point six-nine percent. The, the amount that this board is contributing to, to the chamber and to the Greater Fargo-Morehead Economic Development is the same. Where this shows up from an expense standpoint is, is the new construction sales tax abatement program that this board has approved. And there was, there was a lower number of homes that participated in that in two thousand twenty-five. In the, in the appropriation for Northern Lights, population-based, we saw. Again, that was only a few hundred dollars difference. Senior coordinated coordinator program with CAP LP. We, we have the senior ridership program and we also have a program that, that's funded in, through Quinn's Group and Social Services. And that just shows that the breakout of, of that, of only one of the, one of the positions. When we look at the summary of, of expenditures by department moving to, to Road and Bridge, we saw nineteen point one-seven percent increase in, in highway. I think that the, the big thing for our citizens to understand is the board, the board levies about four hundred thousand dollars a year for, for projects. And you see construction is the, is the main increase of thirty-seven percent this year. And this fluctuates every year based on. That Justin receives funds for at highway. And so really, it's more of an in and an out. I also want to focus on juvenile detention, twelve-bed non-secure facility. Again, this board is to take an action to make sure that, that we've seen an increase in the need for, for female transition homes. And, and so the increased costs associated with that program, which we are hoping to have going by close to the first of the year, we'll see, we'll see that increase. Again, should we, should we not start at the beginning of the year, we may see a lesser amount there. Public Health, fifteen point zero-four percent. Again, one of the things that in Kathy's budget over the last several years, we've seen, seen the usage of, of ARPA, or excuse me, COVID dollars. Those grants are now starting to, to expire. And so again, making sure that we have the funding to carry out that work. Solid Waste Management, we saw did decreases to two point six-one percent. Again, I want to thank Corey for his continued vigilance in, in going through with our SWAC commissioners, making sure that, that we have a, a budget that, that meets the needs of, of the changes that have happened. So we saw a decrease there. And then debt retirement going to Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Gross's question earlier, we added another one hundred and thirty-five thousand, seventy-five dollars. DMV, that'll be our first interest payment. And so again, I know that, just a, a note for our citizens, again, there's been several projects that the facility is, or the county is, has taken on as far as facilities. And because of the planning of this board and the foresight of that, this is the first, first project that we have that's, that operate, the payment of the facility is going on, on the levy. So any questions in regards to any of the, any other of the expenditures?
Commissioner Campbell.
Steve, just a clarification, then when you were talking about the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC and the abatement program, you referred to it as a sales tax.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's not a sales tax, it's a property tax, right?
Property tax, yes. It'd be the property, the two, our two-year property tax program that we've had the last thirteen years.
Just wanted to make sure that clarification.
Any other questions, comments? Proceed.
Thank you. The, the next item that, that we want to touch, touch on has to do with periodically, the legislature will, will make a different, different changes to the tax law. Several changes were enacted in the two thousand twenty-three legislative session that were applied to the two thousand twenty-four assessment. And now we're seeing the impact of the estimate of the twenty-five payable taxes reflected on the truth and taxation statement, truth and taxation statements. Now, the first change that, that we are going to touch on tonight is the, is the first-tier valuation limit for agricultural homestead. This section increases the first-tier agricultural homestead limit excluding the house, garage and the first acre of land to three point five million dollars for assessment year of, of twenty-four. In assessment year twenty-five and thereafter, the tier limit will continue to be changed annually in the same manner under the current law. The Department of Revenue calculates and certifies the first-tier valuation limit annually based on a formula that, that compares preceding years and statewide average taxable market values. For the two thousand twenty-three assessment year paid twenty-four, the first tier, first-tier limit was two point one-five million dollars. This one-year bump is limited, is, is in the limit in reaching the capacity of increasing tillable land sales over the past year. The second year, second point that we, that we want to mention is the increase to the homestead, homestead market value exclusion. This section increases the home base, the base homestead market value exclusion from seventy-six thousand to ninety-five thousand and increases the overall value qualifying for the exclusion from four hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred to five hundred and seven, five hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred. Again, this law was passed in reaction to the rapidly appreciation, appreciating residential sales and market value. The higher the value. The less homestead exclusion a taxpayer receives. These legislative changes are important as we address, address the next couple of slides dealing with real estate tax and also estimated market values. So as we move forward with our preliminary levy, the schools, our EDAs, our cities and our watersheds were also required to meet the preliminary levy setback. And today, in your handout, you have a breakdown of the impacts of those, those preliminary levies if each department or each governmental entity were to approve as, as listed. We have homes priced at. Value, three hundred thousand, four fifty and five fifty, with a reminder that five hundred and seventeen thousand is the max for the homestead credit. So tonight, for, for our example, we are going to look at a two hundred and fifty-thousand-dollar home. I think the important thing to remember in, in this review is this document shows the impact of a proposed levy increase if the value of your. Be the same as last year. And we know that based on the, the impacts of, of the sales that, that very likely has not happened, but in comparing apples for apples, that's what we'd be looking at. So if the, this board were to approve the preliminary levy based on, or the final levy, final budget based on the preliminary levy, a Clay County citizen in Morehead would see a nine dollar and fifty-four percent increase or point, point of nine-four percent. The Morehead, Morehead citizen for the Morehead. Increase of sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cents or a decrease of seven, five point seven-five percent. The city or township would see an increase of one hundred and twenty-five dollars and nineteen cents or an increase of ten point nine-seven percent. The EDA is one dollar and fifty-six cents or an increase of three point five-three percent. And those that had a watershed amount on their tax statement would see a decrease of six point three-four percent or two dollars and fifty cents. That means a citizen in Morehead who owned property with a market value of two hundred thousand dollars, assuming no change from last year, and all budgets stayed the same where they were set, the preliminary levy would see an increase of sixty-eight dollars and thirty cents per year or two point zero-three percent. You can also see the breakdown in the, the document that was handed out for the other areas. This is, again, is for the city of Morehead. But Lori Johnson and her staff can also provide, provide information for other cities and townships if that would be your wish. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Questions for Steve? There'd be none.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just, I just want to point out that this budget process has been going on since early July. And there has been a lot of questions asked prior to tonight. So if the, for the public watching, you know, if we're not asking questions, it's because we've been going through this for six months and I've asked a lot of questions already. Just, just to clarify that, so.
The next area I would like to touch on is the summary of estimated market values. The, the areas that we're going to focus on mostly are tillable land, residential land, but also touch on tillable, or excuse me, on commercial. If, if you take a look at our document here, the estimated market value of all of Clay County's land is ten billion, twenty-six million, four hundred and seven thousand, two hundred dollars, an increase from two thousand twenty-three estimated market value of nine billion, three hundred and sixty-two million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred. The breakdown is tillable land is a increase of two three billion, one hundred and ninety-one million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand or thirty-one point eight percent of our total market value, estimated market value. And the residential land and buildings is four billion, nine hundred and twenty-nine million, one hundred, three thousand, one hundred dollars or forty-nine point one percent, with a total estimate of those two categories equal to eighty point nine percent. The remaining nineteen percent, nineteen point one percent is attributed to commercial properties, which is an increase from eighteen point seven percent in two thousand twenty-three. In two thousand twenty-four, we continue to see an increase in sales price per acre in sales of land auctions, which increased the, the estimated market valuable tillable land about a point five percent increase over two thousand twenty-three. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Any questions? You're not.
Lastly, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'd like to provide, this is some context. Again, we talk about this board's steadfast desire to make sure that from a, from a taxable standpoint, that we're not putting anything on our taxpayers more than what is needed. When we look at our, our expenses and, and revenues from the state auditor, again, based on the most recent information provided by the state auditor's office, when you look at a tax per capita, Clay County is, is at seventy-eight out of the eighty-five, eighty-seven counties and are the eighty-five that reported, that's on the lowest end. The charges for services, as I mentioned earlier, the additional costs that we charge services for, for our citizens is, is eighty-six out of eighty-six. When, when we look at total expenditures from a county perspective, while no one likes to see the increases, we're, we're seventy-ninth out of eighty-five counties reporting when it comes to total expenditures. And so again, while, while this county remains one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Minnesota and nobody likes to see increases, this commission continues to strive to be excellent stewards of public funds. And this document supports the comments made this evening. With that, I would yield for any questions.
Questions for Steve? Well, this, this, the final page kind of sums it up. We have, we have tried to put, keep controls on what we spend and we still have met a lot of the challenges and the, the needs that we've come as. What the fourth, are we the fourth fastest-growing county in the state? So that's, and that is work that we can definitely attribute to our staff and the people that work here keeping lit on it. Steve, do you have any further comments or we can open it up?
No, Mr. Chair, if we would, I would wait for any further comments till after the public comment section.
Okay, we have people here that have come. I will remind you that if you're here because of your appraisal of your, your property, we have people across the way that can review that for you. What tonight is about is about what we're taxing and what we're doing with the taxes. And if you are going to speak, be sure you sign in and identify the township from, from where you are. Anyone wish to speak? Okay, does not, okay, sir. Step up the microphone, tell us who you are.
David Cragness, address is Felton, Minnesota, Markent Township. And I'm a now-retired farmer. So now the retirement account that I have accrued over fifty years of work is being taxed on a yearly basis unlike anybody else's retirement account in the United, in, in the state of Minnesota. We don't tax antique cars or, or 401Ks or anything else on an annual basis, but we do tax ag land on an annual basis. And because I chose to invest in ag land rather than 401Ks or gold bars or antique cars, I get to be taxed each year. I think that's grossly unfair and I hope that you folks will push back against any state mandates that get passed down to you vigorously because of the unfairness of that tax system. The, some of the increases are, in, in a little bit, I thought I saw some smoke and mirrors in sleight of hand. For example, there was a communications one that got moved out of someone's department and yet their department didn't go down. So where the communications person got moved to, that went up, where they came out of the auditor's department, I believe it was, that didn't go down. This year, you've got a hundred thousand and some odd going against your DMV. Well, a few years ago, you had a building where you were doing DMV work and then you remodeled it and then you moved to another place and then you remodeled it and then you moved to another place and built new. And I'm going, really? And that's a nice-looking building. And so do people drive by on a Wednesday afternoon and say? And so, do people drive by on a Wednesday afternoon and say, if that's a nice-looking building, I'm going to stop in and peruse their license plate selection because I want to shop there? I don't think so. You have to buy a DMV plate, so you don't have to have a gorgeous building in order to show up in. So your expenditures per person are too much, and your choices on how to spend them, I think, are too much. I could cut this budget in a whole bunch of places. Way too much detail that I don't have the paperwork to go through here tonight. But those are just a couple of examples that seem a shining example of government's mistaking wants or needs. Thank you very much.
Yes, so just in response to the DMV, they're tearing the DMV down that we were currently in, so it's definitely a need. And this building was built with a lot of architectural work into meeting the needs of the community, the number of people that are coming out and the function of the work. And I think it's, ultimately, we're going to have the state with us when their lease runs out. That'll make it easier for our citizens, plus they'll be paying us rent. So there's a lot more that goes into it than just a shiny building. It's a need that our citizens have, and it's an adequate facility to meet those needs.
If I can, what I'm going to say may or may not satisfy your thoughts regarding the DMV, but going back when we moved to the Moorhead Center Mall, we moved there during the time of COVID, when, if you had ever been to the previous place on 15th Avenue North, you couldn't, you couldn't sit there alone unless trying to have some spacing between them, and there can be some argument about that now. But the fact of the matter is, is when we went into the Moorhead Center Mall, we went in with a three-year lease with an additional optional, was it one or two years? Optional two years. So, and of course, what we did on that then is we, when we did that three-year lease, what we had to do is we had to pay, I think it was about a quarter of a million dollars for fix-up to get that to the way we wanted to have it within that space. And at the same point in time, we did the three-year lease. That entire amount of both the fix-up and the three-year lease was paid for out of ARPA money that came in from the federal government for that purpose, for those types of purposes. Not one nickel of additional dollars were put on anybody's levy to pay for that. Now, you make a good argument, well, why did we build new versus, and there's empty buildings around? I serve on that building committee, and we researched all sorts of different buildings and options. If we had our druthers, we would have gladly found something that existed today and moved in there. But when you take all the criteria that was needed and the potential cost of the remodeling for old buildings and the size that we need and the requirements that the state has for licensing for semis, it right away took a lot of those local facilities out of the options because we have to be able to have ingress and egress for semis. And so it brought those numbers of available buildings down to near zero. And so what we were able to do is we were able to figure out a way to do it, and we built it on county-owned land. That land out that you drive by out there, that's county, we already own the land. So, you know, sure, we had to build new on that particular project, but that, when you looked at all the available alternatives, this was probably going to be as cost-effective as any. And this is going to be good for probably 40 years. And that's just, I'm just telling you what we went through on that.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. I noticed the fastest-growing chunk, as I recall, is social services. I think it was a $2 million jump just this year in social services. As you're driving around the county, most farmers' rows are half-mile-long. And a half-mile-long row, each one of them is $5 a row for county taxes, the tax bill for county and the school. $5 a row it costs, and they don't need any social services. Hornbeens don't need social services. It's really an unfair way that the farmers are getting taxed. And, okay.
When you, if you would have been here when our local legislators were here, I talked about that issue with them. And, you know, part of, any time that we're dealing with social services, and when we have, when we have to fund those things locally, I bring up, I bring up all the time that property tax is a regressive tax. It's a regressive tax for farmers, it's regressive, it's the same thing you can say happens to every individual retirement, retired person that lives in town. Their property taxes still increase, just like your farm taxes still increase, and you're not working anymore. So what we need to do, and we talked with our local legislators about, on those areas where we can get the help from the state, we only have one source of funds in the county, and that's property tax. Whereas the state collects your sales tax, they collect your income tax, they collect all the other taxes that you pay, that should help resolve all these issues. You're, I guess, you're preaching to the choir when you talk to me about that, but...
I hope the choir sings real loud when the state is listening.
We'll do what we can.
Do we have any other citizens who wish to address the commission on this? Anything additional, Steve?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, if there's no other comments, what I would request, the board's approval for Lori and I to bring forward a resolution for final adoption of the 2025 budget on December 17th. Again, this will give us, provide us an opportunity to go through the budget one final time, make some of the adjustments that I spoke about earlier when we looked at the department expenditures that maybe have adjusted since the preliminary levy. And that would be my request.
I have one final question, and I'm going to ask it again on the 17th. You know what it is, right?
Yes, Mr. Campbell, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, we are not providing any additional slush dollars within this budget. The only, the only funding that we have in this budget that are not designated for specific operations are, number one, the internal service that we spoke about earlier and preparing for projects and large purchases. And we also have $250,000 in this budget for next year when our cap is done with our insurance. And this board has made the decision to save a little bit of money, again, from a planning perspective, to offset the impact for our citizens. So that, those are the only two items.
So with those two things in mind, so as we go into 2025, and like as we look at previous years, when there's revenues over expenditures, we should be trying to do our part for this gentleman here, what he talked about, to help keep our taxes low.
Yes, and I can, I will say, over the last 10 budget cycles, this board has taken a certain portion of revenues over expenditures from the previous years and applied it back to the budgets where citizens are not taxed two times.
Commissioner Moshe.
Thank you. Just a comment and feedback. As someone who pays ag land taxes, I hear you, and we definitely are having those conversations loud in St. Paul. The other component is, part of the, one of the items that's really hard to accurately depict in this entire budget is the unfunded mandate component that is significantly affecting our budget, particularly the department in which you identified, sir. So we will continue to advocate for those components. They are, Clay County operates as an extension of the state, whether we like it or not sometimes, and those unfunded mandates are very, very painful. And so the more we can raise awareness and offer creative solutions to that, the better off we all will be.
Do we have a motion on?
I make a motion to approve the stated resolution and the date that the administrator mentioned to be moved to the agenda for approval. A future agenda.
Do we need a motion?
We just, we just make a motion for your approval for me to bring forward the resolution, and Lori.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just if I could take a, we're not quite at the end, but we appreciate the board's action and direction from the start. As I mentioned earlier, the clarification for our departments to have a target to hit is an important part of our budget process, and so we appreciate all the guidance and direction we received over the last five months.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Next, we will go back to committee reports, and Frank, you're going to be the next one.
Oh, God. I need Jenny's computer to give me a...
God, you're sharp, Frank.
We should not get you people together after dark. Last Tuesday, the Personnel Issues Committee, we met and we discussed the year-end adjustments as far as the salaries for the county attorneys, sheriff, commissioners, all raised accordingly according to what the rest of the county employees, again, which was a 3% raise and an 3% wage study increase, too. So all the per diem's would stay the same, all the mileage rates will go according to what the national rates are, and then, and the per diem rate state recommendation was to stay the same. We went over some stuff as far as animals in the workplace, decided not to have any animals in the workplace, other than there, of course, you've got that exception to service dogs or whatever, working canines, but other than that, there's no exception to be made as far as animals. We made specified against smoking and vaping, and will not be permitted. We went over the insurance structure for merit employees, where both spouses work for Clay County, that was covered, and that's already been satisfied, I think, from the procedure that we went through before. And also the Clay County government employee, we discussed a little bit about that. Some of our employees have county discount cards, whether they go to a parts department, something to pick up, you know. If you pick up any personal stuff, you do not use the county discount card. It's just the way it is. I mean, you should know the rules on that, and I just wanted to emphasize again, you know, don't do that. So you appreciate the good knowledge on how to use that discount card that you were given. And I think we pretty much covered everything there. Then we also went over the county commissioners' board operating guidelines. I hope everybody will receive one of these, or you probably have one, as far as the meetings that are ten, type of per diem you can put in for, stuff, so...
That's a draft form, it'll be circulated.
I was going to say, I have not received one.
We'll have a personal conference with Steve then. On Tuesday, Tuesday evening, I went to Dilbert, they had a hearing on 8th Avenue, he wrote going through on 8th Avenue, I think, Jenny, he went to the 15th Avenue one, went through the 8th Avenue one, and just a lot of discussion, seemed to be support for it there, you know, but no definite plans yet, but all good plans to increase what Dilbert's planning on doing. Friday, at the Partnership for Health... I feel like Jenny did. What did I do with it?
Keep dishing it out, Frank.
You're a role model.
I'm overgunned.
We're not getting any younger, are we, Frank?
Are you on November 2025 on the calendar, too?
I think I got it now. Okay, Friday, we had a meeting at Partnership for Health down in Fergus Falls, where the four counties, Otter Hill, Becker, Wilkin, and Clay, met. We discussed, a lot of good discussions as far as what's going on. Wayne Johnson gave his report on the Shack Committee, don't ask me what Shack stands for, but he went down, talked about what happened there, and he gave a good report on that. He also gave an assessment on the CHB Assessment Update. No, I should, no, MacCathie, CHB, County Health, Community Health. Ooh, gosh, I've got to write those things down. Okay. Gave a good report on that. There was also, we had elections for the next year. Luckily, Dave got to be elected for chairman for next year, will be taking over from me and...
Exused Phil.
He ran a tough committee there as far as running, running for that, and good going there, Dave. Other than that, we went through the annual bylaws and stuff like that, and whatever we plan on doing. Kathy, you want to talk more about it, or? You got as much out of it as I did, then, okay. No, I'm sorry about that remark. And we, yesterday, we had the West Central County Watershed Board Meeting, where Commissioner Campbell's already described what we did there. Again, I think the important part that we did come up with, that the budget, as he said, there was only, we spent the $211,000 of the $300,000 that we put into that fund, we're getting short, we may have to be looking at that, you may have to be looking at that in the future about putting some more money into that. Esther, that includes you. And this morning, we had the county-owned lands committee, which we talked about, the sheriff's department utilizing some riverlands out there by the demolition area. We also talked about the Mole Township, there's a flood buyout that we're looking at, there's a, about two, three months ago, someone was in here talking about, I don't know how many were in that, if that was committee meeting, if that was here, where they showed one of the homes, their backyard's falling into the Red River. So we're looking at buying out, what we can do as far as buying out that property. Then we also got county-owned lands inventory, and Matt Jacobson and going to come up with a list of, there's 44 owned properties. The county's going to make a list of where they are, what their cost, whatever, what their situation is. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kravonoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to last Tuesday, the 19th, it's been with the Clay County Collaborative ongoing process here to find a new coordinator. The present one will be resigning somewhere around the beginning of January. Anyway, we finally got to the point, having our interviews, put out a search, and we had two applications. Interview committee rated the two. I'll be presenting that at our next collaborative meeting on December 4th, and then we'll hopefully have approval of one of the two, and we'll move on and have a new coordinator starting again in January of '25. On the 20th, I had the Historical Cultural Society Finance Committee meeting, again, kind of the year-end, getting ready for the year-end levy to make sure that, or not levy, I'm sorry, budget, make sure that's going to be on track. And to date, on the 2024 budget, revenues for admissions, gift shop, and grants are all at or above budget, which is really positive. We finally, going back to admissions, the gift shop is at all-time high, the admissions are towards some of the highs. So we really, that group has really recovered quite well from the pandemic, when admissions really dropped, and it's worked its way back. On the 21st, I had the monthly meeting for HRA. There, too, another entity, much like other shelters and those type things, that were so hit hard by... that were so hit hard by the pandemic and the occupancy. And then the moratorium put on these places and people not paying their rent. Anyway, long and short of it, we've had that, you know, discussion about that. And I'm happy to say for HRA that almost all the buildings are full again. Revenues are working their way back to the positive side and get them back on track. So it's really good to see. There is the only uncertainty they aren't sure about, the grants they'll receive from HUD, all their federal funds. They're quite sure on the new administration. When they come into being in January, it will affect the annual grants. But we know there may be some adjustment, but we don't know in what direction. So that was a conversation. And then last, let's see, oh, that's it on HRA. Excuse me. And then my third meeting that day was the Family Resource Center. Ongoing conversations there as we're still waiting to hear on the state money. Is that coming in? And how the final use of that grant will actually look? We do know we have CAP LP as the navigator. So CAP LP is working along with the core team as to what that may look like. And more of that will be coming forward over the next month. Then on Monday, I had the Wild Rice Watershed District, One Watershed, One Plan Policy Committee. It was well-attended with almost, I think there were only two people missing out of probably 15, I think it is. So it was well-attended. We reviewed, there were three grants, 2021 has been completed, and that was approved. That was a total of $1.3 million. Then we moved into the grant that started, a two-year grant for '23 that goes to '25. About 23% of that grant has been spent, and again, and that's another $1.9 million. And then the new grant coming up for '25 through '27, the preliminary was approved, and that again is a $1.9 million. And these are all projects within the Wild Rice Watershed and just all coming up. Most of these monies are coming out of the Clean Water Fund from the legacy amendment, which is our 3/8% of 1% sales tax throughout the state of Minnesota. So lots of projects. Later that afternoon, I don't know if there was an official name for this, but a name that was brought up. This was over in Good Shepherd in the afternoon. And one person, it made sense, it was Churches United for Churches United. And what was, it was a gathering of churches, public officials. So the foremayors were there, elected officials. Dave and I were there, and along with Cass County. So there were separate discussions on what type of supports we can be utilizing for Churches United. I will say, I was impressed from what we heard in October to where they are now. And the deficits they had, you know, we don't have the deep detail of the budget, but it seems like they really engaged a modified board, I would say. And then also the revenues they brought in through donations, foundations, and other grants they've found of money. And they've come from a position, a couple of months ago, you would have heard that they were saying $200,000 a month just to keep us open to the end of October. And then it was November. And through the money that they've raised so far, they're at a point estimating for the month of December that they will actually, by the end of December, have cash on hand finally, which was wonderful to hear. So the main purpose of it was to ask the community their continued help in keeping them going. There was roughly a million dollars of money coming from the state sometime in June, July. So it's how do we keep them sustainable during that time on their funding? They have cut their expenses in half, which is really good. And so we'll see how things proceed. I think from a county level, it was talked about. Quinn was there, and we talked about, you know, the monies that may be utilized through prevention aid and whatnot. So we're there as a support. City of Morehead's all in. And, you know, we've also seen quite a bit of help from Cass County Public in the utilization of finding places for the homeless. So very complex, but they seem to be making their way slowly forward. And as long as the public may be listening, I think the one thing that their organization is doing, again, affected by the pandemic, there was a period of time there where volunteers couldn't come in to help because of what was going on in 2021. And what they didn't do after that was done was rebuild that volunteer base. And that's one thing they're working hard. They've cut their staff, and they're trying now to fill through the churches and other entities, volunteer groups, to have the services covered, fill the gap with volunteers. So anyway, I thought it was well done. Dave may have a couple of other comments to make on that. And then the last, last night at the Morehead City Council, I really appreciate Commissioner Mojo. You know, she gave a presentation, much like we're giving others, but giving them background of the potential PRTF. And it was really nice to hear, very positive, I thought. Number one, it was going to be on their legislative priorities to help back us. But also to hear back from a couple of the councilmen, or council persons, and their great support. And just not only do they want to make sure passing a resolution, they want to make sure loud and clear that they support, Morehead supports us in what we're doing. So that was well done. Thank you, Ginny. So that's my report.
Thank you. Frank?
Okay, one item I forgot to mention. I mean, when I went, go over tonight, we went over our budget. And when I look at a $124 million budget that we got, and I look at Steve going and Lori going over this and taking care of that and looking at a 4% increase, I think that's great work. And I know it's because our 17 supervisors that we got in our county, that they do a good job. They do their job. Especially when we're looking, we have, we're giving a 3% raise to our employees, plus a 3% wage increase. I mean, it's just amazing how we're still keeping almost one of the lowest county in the state as far as costs per person. And I just want to thank Steve and Lori and all our supervisors for the great work they do. Thank you.
Amen to that. Thank you. Okay, on the 19th, last Tuesday, I attended the PIC meeting, which Frank already covered. Did very well covering it. The next day, I attended the Restorative Practices Advisory Group on this grant we're trying to get, to get restorative justice programs set up. We have got 30, or 26 community members that they've listed. It is a broad spectrum of people from the schools, from the commission, the courts, judges, Clay County Attorney, correction agents, just a lot of professionals that are backing this up. And the guy who's overseeing the grant from the state was in town and was very impressed. And Michelle's doing a great job on this. She'll submit the grant in early December, and we'll hope for the best. It's for $500,000 to set up restorative justice, not just in the community, but particularly in the schools. It has a real beneficial effect on some of the problems they're facing. Okay, on Thursday, 11/21, I attended the Clay County Suicide and Drug Abuse Prevention Meeting remotely. Give me a chance. Boy, I'm going to join the crowd tonight. I can't find my notes. We had an asset assessment activity to start it off with, just looking at a number of things, sort of how to, that go to mental health. And then Annabelle Default did a report on the National Opioid Crisis Summary that she went to. She was also, also had Mike Miller from Morehead Fire Department there. They're talking about some of the harm reduction practices they're doing and trying to map indicators and IDs of resources. Mike covered the Narcan Program Department. Then we do a review of some bylaws that are coming up, potentially going to restructure this committee to have a chair and a vice chair. Let's see, later that day, I attended the Diversion Authority Board Meeting, which Commissioner Campbell did a good job covering. We did also, one thing I want to add to it is Jason Benson is now assigned an agreement to be the executive director. He'll start in, was it January or March? January. And some of the terms of his agreement, but he's well thought of, and I think he's going to be an exceptionally good pick. They did a good job finding him. Following the diversion authority, I had the Finance Committee at the Lake Agassia Regional Library. We agreed on, during the Finance Committee, we agreed on the union negotiations and the wages for Lake Agassia Regional Library non-union people. And we forwarded that to the full board. We had the full board meeting right after the Finance Committee meeting. Both of those measures passed, and we had an update on the library construction. And then we had nominations and elections for next year's officers. And it must be my week, I was elected president of the Board of Trustees. So that's two elections I won last week and a third three weeks ago. So I'm, you know, something. Following that, no, that finished my day out. And then the next day, we had the Partnership for Health Community Health Board Meeting. And Frank covered that well. And yes, I was elected, on that day, I was elected as chairman for next year. And then Monday, we had the meeting with Churches United and the whole community. And what I add, Steve was there. We had so much staff there, had people that really knew what they're doing. When, I'm looking at, Ms. McKay was there. We just did a good, we had a good turnout. And the, I think the emphasis on the thing was to the communities of faith. This is not something, and as we've talked about a couple of times tonight, if we spend money, it's coming out of the public in property taxes. We have people that are just now making their house payments, retired folks here. If we run it up too much to offset expenses like Churches United, it's going to be more people facing a housing crisis, just to remain in their own home. I think we made that, we expressed that to our state representatives earlier, that this is something that needs state funding to be increased. It's something we need to focus on. And I got an opportunity, they asked me to address after Mayor Carlson. And I said that this is a thing that the county is going to support. We're going to try and channel and steward funding through this, that comes from the state to this project. But it's also something we need a community involvement in. The community of faith opened this and operated for many years, and that's where some emphasis needs to go. And I know we probably don't have a huge bunch of people listening to this, but we, they need volunteers and they need financial support. And if you can do it, that's a critical issue. There is going to be state funding, but it's going to be in the next fiscal year, and they're just going to have to tough it out this year and stay on top of it. They have done a very good job of that up to this point. And I'm very encouraged that they have the wherewithal and the savvy to get it done. And the community faith, or the community of faith was there and represented very strongly. So it was just a good meeting, and I appreciate the efforts they're going through. And then today, earlier today, I met with Rory Beal and Jason McCoy, and we discussed the tobacco ordinance that's coming up for a public hearing. And that completes my report. Steve, you got anything for us?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Last Tuesday, participating in the PIC, that's been well-covered. Later that afternoon, I met with Representative Keeler and three representatives from the state in regards to our, getting our bill language, so it's ready to be jacketed for the PRTF. Also worked with Joe on operational costs, specifically of the area within the facility that the PRTF would include for rental amount for solutions. 20th, I met with Sarah as we continue to plan for the intergovernmental retreat that we're in charge of this year with our other governmental entities. Again, that's January 31st, and there'll be save-the-date documents going out, or emails going out on December 20th. Again, opioids, homelessness. Our PRTF in our legislative area session will be taking place that day. Excited about that. On the 20th, with many of you, I participated, have stopped in for GIS Day. I want to thank Mark and Jocelyn for their great chocolate chip cookies. And it was fun to see a lot of the good things that, and adjustments, like many of our departments, trying to enhance the services for both internal and external use. On the 20th, I also met with Jill Murray. Again, Jill shared with you, she's been providing overviews to better understand the assessing process to different citizen groups in our community. And we thank Jill for doing that. And the 20th, met with Robert Wilson, Cass County Administrator. Again, talked on budgets, the Red River Regional Dispatch Project. Participated in the SWAC meeting, that's been well-covered. Met on the 21st, met with Matt Jacobson and Eric Dodds from AE2S in planning and zoning, looking at planning and zoning from the SC4 and SC5 standpoint once the project is built. The Corps had a few different questions, and so I would guess that some of that will probably end up before our Planning Commission in the coming months. I participated in MCC JPA, that's been covered. I also, on the 22nd, participated in the call with Darrell on the Buffalo Ridge Project. It was interesting to hear about their company and the potential program or setup that they would have. Yesterday, participated in the West Central Water District Board Meeting, that's been addressed. Also participated at the Churches United event. We had a Government Center Emergency Procedure Review Meeting. Again, just want to thank the Safety Committee for helping us plan for, hopefully, things that we're never going to have to utilize, but to have our staff ready for, just in case we do. Did have a phone conversation yesterday with Dan Molly on several shared issues with the county. I would note that in regards to the resource recovery facility, Dan's hope is, again, that we will be able to come to an agreement to make sure that partnership continues. As we get close to the end of the year, in December, we generally start, I generally ask you guys to start looking at your committee assignments from the standpoint. I know that several of you have different committee assignments that conflict with each other that make it challenging to hit both. And so as we have a new commissioner coming on in January, it'd be good to start looking at that. I know that several of you have different committee assignments that actually need to be appointed prior to January. I know that, for example, the EDC will have that before the commission next week with Commissioner Abiger. But if there's any other assignments that you guys have that require a resolution or a signature from this board, we can look at bringing those forward. Participated in the Lance Committee Meeting this morning. Also, just one thing, we received an email earlier this week Also, just one thing, we received an email earlier this week from the Chamber in Cale. There's going to be a Minnesota Legislative Session Event, it was scheduled during our board meeting on December 17th. And so would just be looking for the board's feedback if one, you would be interested in moving the board, if it's important to move the board meeting back to, say, 9:30, if we have a representative there from the county or or what your thoughts are.
I think, and I talked to Cale this morning, it's a little disturbing that our opportunity to talk, we had our legislators here, but something that's designed for local officials to get with the legislative body is scheduled during our meeting, and I expressed that to Cale. If we moved our meeting to 9:30, and I don't, if you had a chance to talk to the sheriff about if the LEC's open?
Yeah, I didn't, didn't get a hold of him this afternoon, but...
Okay. It would be convenient, they can't have it at the Yom Kalmst, but it'd be convenient to have it here on campus. We can look into that. But I would, I'm asking for a motion that we move our meeting that day to the, to 9:30.
What's the date?
17th.
17th.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Given the amount of, you're trying to lobby for at the Capitol, I think it's important to utilize their presence, as many of us as possible. And so I would make a motion to move that meeting on that date to 9:30.
Second.
Have motion to second.
So just remember on that agenda, we had the public hearing for the tobacco ordinance that day. So just make sure we get the notice out to people of interest that we're coming, we may be a little late.
That's a good point. We advertised for that public hearing, I suspect at nine o'clock.
Hmm.
So.
I have it on here, oh, yeah, I have it on here at nine.
Then we can't change.
Is it too late to change it?
Yeah, well, yeah, it would be too late to, but... Oh, you haven't posted, okay.
I haven't posted it.
Okay.
You've not sent, sent notices, though. No, no notices have been sent?
So could we make that for 10 o'clock? Excellent.
All right, perfect. And then the last...
We, we still get a, oh, sorry, we have the vote.
Yeah. I just want to make that comment.
I appreciate that, that was important. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign.
And then just the final thing that I have for our citizens, the county offices will be closed Thursday and Friday this week in recognition of things. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And, oh, go ahead.
The, when does AMC need the committees for AMC?
We would, you have, you have already voted, our voting members, and if they ask for any changes...
About the committees?
Oh, we would, they would, they would probably want to know here by the first of the year. Because unless you're looking to, unless you want to change for the upcoming meeting, then we would, we would just, you would have to take a vote and I would notify AMC at the next board.
Well, I'm, I'm just bringing it up because obviously Frank will not be on and I'm, I'm assuming that the other board members will stay on their committee. And I would like to transfer from transportation to government and let Ezra have the Transportation Committee. That would be the change that I would recommend, and I think Ezra would appreciate being on the transportation. So I don't know, I don't know when that notification needs to be made.
Well, if you, if this board was to make, make that motion right now to to do the assignments, I could notify, I would notify the AMC right away.
Well, do, do you want to participate at AMC in December on what committee?
Well, I'll, I'll still be on transportation for December, so I just didn't know when they needed to have the notice for...
We can probably make that when we do the portfolio assignments on the first of the year.
Yeah, Frank will be there for general government.
If your intent isn't to participate in, in, in December here, then we can do it in January.
Okay. Anything, Jackie?
Do we have to do something on December 25th and, or two meetings on the 24th and 31st? Are we going to do that later or?
Oh, well, I mean, we can, you can talk about it now or we can talk about it up, well, Commissioner Campbell will be gone, I guess, next week. So, yeah, so we're just looking ahead at the schedule. We are scheduled on Tuesday of Christmas Eve to have a board meeting. And so it's extremely important from the auditor's, auditor's standpoint that we have a board meeting at the end of the year on the 31st. The 24th, I would leave that up to the board of what their wishes are.
Is there going to be any difficulty with agendas if we pass on the 24th?
I think it would be pretty, pretty limited from, from that standpoint. I know, I mean, we do, having, I know from our past discussions, having the board meeting at the end of the, end of the year on the, is more important than than this meeting generally.
We'll still have four meetings in December by canceling the 24th, because there's five Tuesdays in December.
Well, we won't have a meeting on the, we won't have a meeting on the 10th because we'll be at AMC, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I, you know, and again, I, the county, the county is open till noon. We're going to have a lot of employees that are having to work. My, my only reason in suggesting that we wouldn't have one would be so that we don't have to have county employees having to prepare or present at that meeting. Otherwise, I'm, I'm available if we need, if Lori would need us to have a meeting. It certainly wouldn't have to be very long, but I don't want to have to have any of our staff people on that morning make preparations to have to present to the board. That's my only issue.
And I agree, that's, if we can do it, that's a courtesy to them more than us.
Well, if you, if you want to cancel that meeting, we would need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we don't have a meeting on December 24th.
I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Well, I've, I've said, you know, I, I'm willing, I'm willing to come here, but I, you know, you typically, when we have meetings, we have staff that are here presenting for some reason or another, and I don't want them on a short day of their schedule to have to prepare for that. I, you know, but...
Where people that are taking PL on...
So from that standpoint, I, you know, I'll support the motion, but I, I'd be more than willing to come too, so.
Any further? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Jackie, you got anything? Okay. If there's no further business, I will, I will adjourn us.